Good evening, everyone. I'd like to draw the meeting of the LaPorte County Commission to order for the date, Wednesday, June 17th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Mathias?
Present.
Commissioner Morzynski?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'd like to consider this evening's agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
And President, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next, approval of the claims, excuse me, approval of the minutes for June 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Consideration of claims.
We have payroll ending June 5th, 2020, and the amount of $1,184,227.81. Then, under miscellaneous claims, $3,242,830.10.
And President, I make a motion to approve. The miscellaneous claims are high because of the paving money that was paid out of these claims, which has been budgeted. So that's the reason it's high.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to accept the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Last call. Any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Thank you. We'll move on to department reports and department head comments. Mr. Lewandowski.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As has been previously reported, we know the EMS base is open here in LaPorte, and everything is going good up to date. I just wanted to give you an update. As we started the project, we had $999,000 to work with. Construction costs ended up coming in at final at $939,576.90. So we were under budget in getting everything taken care of.
I want to congratulate you and thank you. This was an extraordinary task. You know, I remember all the things that we went through, and then you stepped in and took care of it, and on time and under budget.
Yes, we got them in on time.
Thank you.
What are we doing on the Michigan City base?
Michigan City started the roof today. We're got it stripped off. They're getting the shingling taken care of. We shingled in this week. Siding is going to be going. And we started the extension of the back for the ambulance so they can get fitted. So we're hoping to be done within about four to five weeks.
Wonderful.
If we keep on a good pace, we don't get hit with bad weather.
Okay. Thanks.
I think that's of interest to the public, is that the money that was saved by the -- you're sharpening everyone's pencils, whether they liked it or not, they sharpen their pencils. And then you were able to apply that money to the base in Michigan City.
Yeah, we have moved what's remaining over to the base so we can get that taken care of. And we are actually going to do some of the inside work. There was some carpeting and tile that's been damaged and been sitting there for a long time. We're able to take care of some of those issues, too.
That's great. Thank you very much, Larry. Appreciate your hard work. Really appreciate that. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Jay wanted to talk on Zoom. I don't see him.
Do we have someone wanting to log in? Is that?
Is there anyone on Zoom that was getting ready to speak before Mr. Rodriguez speaks? Okay. Tony?
Madam President, members of the Commission, I'll be extremely brief. We were pleasantly surprised in closing the first round of applications for the LaPorte County Action Fund on June 12th, which was this immediate past Friday, with approximately 28 applicants. So we couldn't be more pleased with the effects of our guerrilla marketing attack and getting the word out on the program.
Could you, just as an overview for those who may not have followed this story, just give us in a two-sentence nutshell what this money is to be used for, targeted in LaPorte County, not in Michigan City or LaPorte City, but in our broader county area?
I'd be happy to, Madam President. The LaPorte, it's been called the LaPorte County Action Fund, but as a result of the Office of Community and Rural Affairs down in Indianapolis opening up an opportunity for communities and non-entitlement communities to apply for COVID relief funds, we were successful in aggressively preparing an application to assist, and we've deemed and refer to this program as a lifeline program, to the small business community that have been identified as the hardest hit as a result of the COVID epidemic. So the, just in an overview, these funds, what they're going, what they're being made available for are small businesses that have, by no fault of their own, have been pinned down within their homes, unable to operate their businesses, and generate the income necessary to pay their rent, utilities, their mortgage payments, continue to pay their, and most importantly, their employees, which then continue to trickle down through and have that negative economic impact. So this being referred to as a lifeline program, these funds will just simply serve as a means by which the hardest hit, and we're very pleased to see that 27 of those small businesses have applied. We are aggressively going through the and categorizing for completion and organizing this and preparing for, we're about 95% complete in that process, but we'll be preparing and presenting to the upcoming Redevelopment Commission's meeting this coming Wednesday. It is not the Redevelopment Commission per se that we are presenting to, but that board happens to very closely mirror the membership of the Redevelopment Commission. But I can't emphasize enough how Bailey and I today, this is about day six in the evaluation, and the constant communication with these small business people, how we're hearing the impacts of COVID on their small businesses. So we're getting immediate feedback. We're really implementing an immediate business retention, expansion program in about a week-long program. So that feedback is very important because we're uncovering additional opportunities as well as challenges that these businesses are meeting. But we couldn't, with the point I need to most importantly emphasize, the Commissioners, the LaPorte County Council, the LaPorte County Redevelopment Commission, all of our state representatives that have played a role in assisting in this application process, it is no small amount of money that's been awarded by the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. And we should all feel thankful that we've come out successful in the application and that we're going to be able to provide this much-needed assistance to the small business community.
Thank you, Tony. I think of note is the $250,000 is LaPorte County tax dollars that go down to the state. Generally, they go and they're dispersed. This is a way that we were able to bring that money back home to help our own local businesses. And when you talk, you and I spoke, you were talking about heartwarming stories, but also some heart-wrenching stories about businesses that are really hanging on by their fingernails. And this money will be really good stopgap funds for them, to keep them alive so that they can, then, as the economy starts to roll again, they'll be able to flourish and be successful. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Bailey, for your, wherever Bailey is. Thank you, hi Bailey, thank you for your hard work and for really looking out for the small business community.
Yeah. What you have in front of you is really just a snapshot of front and back of all that have been involved in the process. We thought it'd be helpful when we send them downstate for evaluation to give a frame of reference, a little bit about our community as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you very much, Shaw.
Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? All right, moving on, requests. Any requests this evening? No? No requests. Under Old Business, award the bids for the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project. Ms. Winsky, will you talk us through that? And Mr. Friedman?
Yes. We have with us tonight Matt Hubbard and Attorney Beege, and they will speak to this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Winsky. What we're doing tonight, now, keep in mind, we, this is a construction services agreement. We've not done this in the county before. So what we're doing tonight is not accepting bids like we would normally do, like on an annual basis with the paving. But we're, Donna Blank is going to give us a presentation. We're asking for approval of the guaranteed maximum price in this contract. So the way this works is we have our budget, we had the design, we had the bids. Now, Matt will fill you, and we had a couple bids we need to rebid out because we didn't have the proper bid material. But we have our bottom-line number. The bottom-line number will be the guaranteed maximum price, which is on budget, by the way, which is a nice thing to hear in LaPorte County. But in addition, we're asking that the guaranteed maximum price be approved and authorization to enter into a construction services contract, the actual construction on the courthouse. Tony Blank will handle the bids and the bid categories. Are there any questions on the, because we've not done this before, so this process is a little different than what we've done in the past.
So what is the benefit of doing it this way, just so the public has a clear understanding?
The state came back with a new statute a couple, three years ago, and only municipalities can do this. So this guaranteed maximum price contract, we're locked in. We can't go over, period. So the advantage is the contractor themselves, usually you have a general contractor with subs, and if something goes wrong, then you have this or that. The way this works is during the design phase, the construction company participates in the design, and they did greatly in this case. And so we netted a significant savings. You know, architects like things to look nice. Well, sometimes a contractor looks at it and says, "That looks nice, but this is a much less expensive way to build this." So the build is, they participate in the design also. So that's the significant difference in the two. And so once construction begins, it works differently from just the sub situation where we're simply set a bill. That make sense?
Yes, thank you.
More cost-effective.
Much more cost-effective. And again, we have a budget, and we should be locked in on the budget. I spoke to bond council today. They're making some revisions. We're on track on the bids, on the timeline. We may need to set a special meeting. It may be possible to stay on track on the bond itself. But I spoke to bond council as well as our accountants, and they're locked on and they're moving for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt? If you could just introduce yourself for the public.
Sure. Matt Hubbard. I'm Senior Preconstruction Manager for Ton and Blank Construction in Michigan City. Thank you for having us tonight. We've got some good news to share with you. We've all been working hard with your team and the architectural team and everybody at the courthouse, so I think all of that has paid off. Just a few brief notes about the numbers and the contractors and the subcontractors and all of the vendors that we invited, about 548 different entities to bid on the project. We received 67 total bids in 28 different bid categories. Within those bid categories, there were also 17 alternates. So we've had a lot of different ideas, a lot of different numbers to evaluate, and we've been working on that. There's also about 11 contractors from LaPorte County, and we're still working with some nine different XBE, so MBE, WB contractors that we were invited, and we also received bids from two of those, and we sat some of those that are still involved and being considered for award of contracts. So we just wanted to give you an overview of what it is that we were looking at as far as the bid results, and I think we got a real good turnout on our bids. As Doug mentioned, there were two or three bid categories that we will be rebidding, and we can talk about that as we get through it. Tony, if you could bring up the approved budget. This is the approved budget from April of 2019. Our construction budget at that point was $19,029,521. We then have our architectural and engineering fees, so if we put all of that together, we're about $20,741,785. We started looking at the other project costs. So we know we're going to have some move costs. We have some furniture costs. We know that there will be some things that come up, so you also have contingency. So the approved budget was $22,492.26. So what we've done now is we've taken all of the bids, we've evaluated the bids, and now we can compare the bids to this budget. Tony, if you could go to the next one, please. I do have a hard copy if you would prefer.
That'd be helpful. This is when Zoom actually works better than being here, because we can't see it, but on Zoom, they'll be able to see it on their desktop or their laptop.
So now we have two columns. So you'll see the approved budget column and then the as-bid total column on the far right. Our construction budget, we started with the $17,994, which then, when we put in the site work costs, was the $19,029,000 that I showed you earlier from the April budget. We're comparing that now to $18,468. So our bids came in well, they came in under budget. There are a few things that we have to transfer from the other program budget, and those line items would be the asbestos abatement, that's now included in the demolition contract. That was $50,000. Our construction contingency was also in the program budget. That needs to be brought into the construction amount. We're going to transfer that, and you can see that, both of those from line item 34 for the asbestos is where it was originally, and line item 56 for the construction contingency. It's more than the $722 that was there, because the $722 was locked in from the original $18 million budget. So that never increased, so now we've increased that according to the way that the contract is structured. We then add our preconstruction costs to date, so Ton and Blank hasn't had any billings at this point. So now that we know when we're going to start construction, we know how much we've spent to date. Everything that we have going forward after this will be part of this construction contract as well. And the phasing was also part of an add that was outside the budget, so that is now brought, then brought into the budget so that we can build the addition and then move everyone in, and then we can start doing the construction of the demolition, I'm sorry, of the existing building. So that comparison gives us, $19,029 is what the budget was. We're $19,932. So again, you'll see how that works when we are able to transfer those costs from the other line items that we were talking about in the items below. The architecture and engineering amount, it's lower than what was in the construction, or I'm sorry, in the approved budget. There will be some additional costs, and I know that Joey is considering those at this point, but we're well within where we would need to be in order to take care of that. When we bring in the other soft costs, so that if you look at, we were at $203,000 for the soft costs, so that asbestos abatement was transferred out, so we're approximately $50,000 less on the as-bid total, because that's above in the construction contract. The other project cost, the $4512, that would be for the state permit, so that's based on the area of the building, not the cost. So that stays the same. And then the $49085, you have some money to move people, you also have some money to rent some parking if it's required, and you have some money to rent some either storage space or some space for any of your services employees that are currently in the building. That gives us our comparative total then on line 36 of the $20,741 to the $21,479. I'm sorry, that was where we were before, and then we just had the equipment and furnishings at $225,000. It stays the same. We're going to be reusing quite a bit of furniture, we're going to use quite a bit of the equipment that we already have. We have accepted one of the alternates, which was to salvage the courtroom furniture, and so some of the benches, some of the jury boxes, some of the rails are being salvaged, and then they'll be put into storage. And then we've put in $75,000 to bring those back and then reinstall them. So that was one of the larger alternates that were accepted. The furniture, we have, the $225,000 was there, and then now it's $300,000 with the addition of the $75,000 for the reinstallation. So those comparative numbers. So now our number is $21,020 versus a $21,833. So now, here comes the good news. Because we moved that $722,000, which into the construction contingency, we also have a little bit of increase because of the cost of the project for builder's risk insurance. And it was, again, based on the transfer before those things were below the line. Now they're in the construction cost, so your builder's risk just went up a little bit. And then your owner project contingency is still at $640,000. So by doing that, we're able to have the total project cost come in at budget at $22,492.025.
One question. The line 51, other project costs?
Yes.
What, can you give us a little explanation? It was $278,597, now it's $353,598?
Right. That's a total of the items above between line 40 and line 48.
Okay.
So that's just a subtotal of those costs.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, do we need a motion for?
Well, you will want to put something on the record referencing the receipt of the bids. I also want to note, too, from the attorney's standpoint, and this commission charged Ton and Blank to come back, sharpen their pencils, come back, bring this thing to a budget that could be accepted by the county council. They did exactly that. I mean, this really tremendously extraordinary work by Matt, by John, and others with the firm to make this thing fit within the budget and to do it with a quality and size and structure and overall capability, which is exactly what this commission wanted. So it's certainly worth noting on the record.
Thank you for that. Some of those meetings were quite interesting. Lots of people around the table, and the charge was sharpen your pencils. We can't go to the county council with anything above this number. And I give Joey Winsky a ton of credit. She kept everyone's feet in the fire, and those pencils got really, really sharp. So thank you for that on behalf of the taxpayers.
The Commissioners, we're asking for two motions. One, to accept the guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
And two, authorization proceeded with the construction contract.
Madam President, I make a motion, the maximum guaranteed price is $22,492.25.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to accept the not exceed figure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried.
And Madam President, the second motion is to accept the bids as presented.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bids as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Are we good, Mr. Beege? Yes.
Do you want the guaranteed max referenced?
We were asked for authorization to proceed forth with the construction contract.
And make a motion to authorize, to give authorization to proceed with the construction.
I'll second that motion.
So it should say construction services contract? I understand? Okay. So we'll amend the motion to, we are accepting the construction services contract on the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project. We have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Thank you so much for those who presented.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Next on the agenda, we want to ratify the June 11th, 2020 memo to department heads on our revised and updated county building reopening plan, and then wanted to spend a moment to discuss the judge's signed order requiring masks for all who enter the courthouse.
Yes, I believe Ms. Mossman has the revised memo. As Commissioners know, Commissioner Mathias sent out a memo outlining the latest steps that were approved in terms of the reopening plan on June 11th, but we need you to ratify that on the record. Barb, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that in terms of where we're at, and then we can discuss the judge's order as well.
I believe Barb was having some connectivity issues. Barb, were you able to connect?
It's about the third round of reentry, so we're gonna second the vote.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Well, we've got the memo that was sent out to all department heads.
We've seen it.
Exactly. And all you need to do is ratify it on the record today.
Motion to ratify.
Thank you. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to ratify our reopening of county property plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 In terms of the judge's order, we've got copies for members of the press that all the judges have signed that indicates that anyone entering the county buildings, the courthouses must wear a mask. It will be enforced certainly by the judges, which helps back up and support what the Commissioners are doing as well. It's simply a prudent step that all the judges have felt was the right thing to do along with the Commissioners' orders, so we simply wanted to recognize that as part of the record tonight as well.
Thank you. Madam President, I wanted to make one comment. During the discussions, the judges felt that sometimes they ask people to come for some legal proceedings, not because they volunteer for it, but because, for example, you know, if they're on a jury trial or something like that. So the judges felt obligated that they should do everything to protect their health and well-being, and so that's the reason why they decided to do this, and I strongly support that.
We should note as well, Commissioner Mathias is scheduled and has held very soon conferences along with Council President Novak. The plan that's in place has been well thought out. It is designed to be a combination of both masks, sanitizer, appropriate screening at the security stations coming in, and again, Dr. As you've said, it's the three pillars.
Four pillars.
And so, that's exactly right. And social distancing, and I believe, too, maintenance is currently involved with retrofitting various offices, so that by the time you open back on July 6th, we'll be fully equipped at all the offices.
Madam President, one other comment I wanted to make was, the reason we kept insisting on this four pillars is that's what we are practicing at the hospital. And because of that, you know, when this first started, everybody was in panic, you know. We were all scared and nervous on how to deal with the situation. But now that everybody has gotten used to it, and thank God, there has not been any spread from a patient to a patient, or a staff to a patient, or a patient to staff. So I think if we can do this, and practice these four pillars, we can continue to reopen, continue to have businesses reopen, and the economy ramped up again, and take adequate precautions that way we can prevent the spread of the disease.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. I think we all agree that that's prudent and wise safety measures for, not only for staff, but for our citizens. I would request, Diane, that you get a copy of that, the email that we just were referencing, the memo to department heads, so that if the press would like a copy of that, they can have access to that as well. So we have a motion on the floor to accept the judge's signed order, or Shaw, what would you suggest?
Yes, essentially, you're ratifying the closing plan that was outlined in your memo and recognizing on the record the judge's order that has now been issued.
Okay.
A motion to ratify.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. New business, consider Hawk contract for protected left turn signal installation. Mr. Sullivan, I believe you're on the line?
Don't think he is.
No?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We can hear you now.
That's better.
Okay, good evening, ladies. I needed to be undisturbed.
Good evening.
I'm presenting your consideration contract for Hawk electric for installation of the four dedicated turn arrows for the Port of Love and Gotten Road intersection.
Madam President, the cost is $9,287.79. Is that correct, Mr. Sullivan?
That's correct.
Yep, okay. Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract for the protected left turn signal installation on Johnson Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Mr. Sullivan, do you have the?
May I add, I kind of tweeted before during the department head conference, a few updates if you're interested in, you know, some of the projects, kind of how we're working on?
Yes, thank you. Please.
Yeah, we, the Union Mills, Bridgehead, South Union Mills, number 7778, they are in construction currently. They have six weeks complete time on those. The big beat hits the end Friday, and hopefully that project won't have any issues so far. It's going good. For everybody probably curious about the Clear Crossing project on Thousand North, the baby is complete, and the X-Driveing should take place tomorrow. That project should be wrapping up, you know, real quick. I do have, on Two of the Roads, I do have the completed survey. I do have, on two roads, I do have the completed survey for the two road projects by Roman Curry School. And we did have to purchase the property yet. And then I need to create, you know, the R S eight for the design build and do some drawings for that. But there is the title search, purchase agreement, and some deep transfer and recording needs to be done. And that's, I also want to bring up then regarding to that, I do have, I believe, Ben Barron on the line here tonight?
Yeah, Ben was on the line.
Okay. Well, there is some tasks here, especially the design build for the drawings that I would like to have reviewed by somebody. We did that with the courthouse project and everything. We did it in town, but I think it's still very beneficial to get a second set of eyes to look at some of these projects to make sure there's no areas of vision, you know, and especially on my part, it doesn't work. So I would just like you to consider the possibility of maybe F U S I, do an on-call, agreement with the county, for its best fight amount. If you love the bet, I could bring in full to you if, you know, if it's something you have considered, I can do it later date. And that's about all I have at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next on the agenda, consider C.R. Bailey subdivision in Cass Township. Matt Garatano?
Hello, Madam President.
Good evening.
Hello, hi. Members of the commission?
Yeah.
I have some handouts for you all, as well as the actual secondary plat. I can pass them out now if that's okay?
Please.
Thank you. So, yeah. Oh, okay. That'll be better, easier. Thank you. So, my name is Matt Garatano from Charles Hendricks and Associates Survey and Engineering here in LaPorte at 512 Lincoln Way. Presenting to you today, in hopes for favorable consideration, a three lot minor subdivision by the owner, Charles R. Bailey. It's presently mixed agricultural and residential area. The eight adjacent parcels next to the parent parcel, which is in consideration for the minor subdivision, eight of those 10 are already residential parcels. So the owner would like to just subdivide this last remainder piece, make three new pieces for potentially three new home sites. The lots would be serviced by the own private septic and wells, and presently meets all zoning requirements.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes, Madam President, members of the commission, we've had a chance to review the documentation. It does come to the commission with a recommendation by the plan commission, and we believe it is consistent with the subdivision rules and regulations that have applied in the past. So we're recommending approval.
Mr. Friedman, you know, when these new subdivisions are constructed, this water problem keeps coming up. Will that be addressed in this particular?
It's our belief that plan commission addressed this with it. Because you're right, Dr., that it's been a concern, as we know, with various subdivisions. To my understanding, and I think you could speak to that, but I believe that was addressed with the plan commission in terms of water drainage at that time.
Yes. Not only was it addressed in a plan commission, what has brought up in design review, was brought up in design review, handled in plan commission, and that's why, and that's how we got the favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Because we have had residents of certain subdivisions here at the commission meetings who are upset with water in their basements and all that. So I just wanted to make sure it's addressed.
I totally understand. I personally live in Meadowview, so I know how this works.
Thank you.
You sure do. Not to rub salt in the wound, right?
Right.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. I said of the plan commission, I remember when this came through, there was a concern about high water level, very high concern. But it was not within the realm of the plan commission to turn it down for that. However, you will still have to get a septic permit.
Yes.
And we'll see how that goes. So good luck on that. I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Also, if possible, that we're requesting the signatures, if possible, be done tonight at tonight's meeting for the secondary plat. I provided a full-size, saleable copy.
Yeah.
That's okay. All right. Excellent. And no other questions?
No other questions. We have a motion and a second on the floor to consider and approve this subdivision plat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It has been approved.
Does that have to be a blue ink or anything?
Next on the agenda, consider an agreement between the LaPorte County Health Department and an independent contractor, Mr. Mancuso.
I'm here to hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you, yes.
I have five people already lined up ready to go. I need you to approve that contract, and we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Madam President, maybe for the public who is listening to this, who don't know what this contract is about, this is regarding our reopening plan. And we are going to have some screening stations in front of our buildings. And at the screening stations, for the visitors who are going to be visiting our county buildings, there will be a questionnaire, and then also a temperature check that will be done prior to entry into the county buildings. And these individuals who are being hired part-time and temporarily will be doing those screenings. So Tony, go ahead now. I just quickly summarize what this contract is all about.
Let me address, if I could, because I've worked this out with the H R department. It is similar to a, Tony, I'm just walking through the independent contractor agreement. It's similar to another independent contractor agreement we provided for another department. This provides, of course, no benefits, no status or tenure rights with the county, but they're simply coming in as independent contractors to serve. I think you got either medical students or nursing students who agreed to serve at the screening stations. And so this contract is recommended by both my office and the H R department.
And make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract between LaPorte County Health Department and their independent contractors that they will be hiring to do the screening process. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, consider resolution hailing the landmark U.S. Supreme Court ruling recognizing LGBTQ employees as protected under employment discrimination under Title VIII of Civil Rights Act.
Title VII.
Sorry, VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1967. Dr. Cora?
Madam President, in 2015, this county commission had adopted a non-discrimination policy, and we reaffirmed a commitment that no vendor, contractor, grant recipient, or anyone receiving public benefits of any kind from the county should discriminate on the basis of race, religion, color, disability, national origin, age. And we specifically at that time referenced sexual orientation and gender identity in such an ordinance. So I just want to thank the U.S. Supreme Court for reaffirming our county policy, which is already in existence, and which, all it does is it prohibits discrimination based on all these grounds. So I make a motion to approve it.
Thank you. We are, a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I thought that the Civil Rights Act already covered everybody. And it, sometimes I get a little concerned when a special interest group comes in and says, well, we want, as it says, stays right in there, that we will provide reasonable accommodations. I hope we don't live to regret that, because maybe one person's idea of reasonable accommodations may not be what, something that we're used to. And I hope this doesn't snowball into a lot of other organizations wanting something more than what they already have covered by the Constitution. But I will second the motion anyway.
Mr. Friedman?
I can address that perhaps, because Mr. Morzinski raises a common misconception. Individuals based on both sexual orientation and gender identity were not covered or protected under Title VII prior to this particular case. And so all you're doing is recognizing that the Vostok decision, which was written by Justice Gorsuch this week, finally recognizes that and simply puts those in the LGBT community in the same category as other protected groups against unfair firings. That's what this really does. And I know you have felt that way strongly, that it ought to be across the board, that all persons should be able to have equal protection under the law. And that's what this decision finally does. It provides that kind of protection against arbitrary firing, demotion, discharge for those in the LGBT community. And that's why it's viewed as such a landmark decision. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
So thank you for the explanation, because I think it's really important that people understand that it's, we're not providing anything other than what's right and what has been provided to all other people across the United States. So sexual orientation and gender identity will no longer be reason for firing, for employment discrimination, et cetera. And I think this is huge for our country. You know, we all are very conscious of some of the things that are happening across our cultural landscape. And to know that the Supreme Court took time to make this decision to protect everyone in the United States, I think is significant and something to be celebrated.
Well, as you indicate, Commissioner, as you know, as you all know, we have a plaintiff's employment practice in my law firm. And it's been very frustrating to us to have clients come that may be part of the LGBT community, and we could offer them no encouragement or assistance legally from an unfair firing. Other groups based on age, sex, race, handicap, ethnic origin are protected under Title VII. And finally, now with the Vostok decision on Monday, those groups are protected. So we have something to offer those clients when they come to see us.
That's great. Thank you so much. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to hail the decision written by the Supreme Court to protect gay and transgender workers from unfair firing and discrimination in the workplace. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have commissioners' comments. Commissioner Morzinski?
I got nothing.
Yep.
I got it all.
Commissioner Cora?
A couple of things, Madam President. First of all, I wanted to address our June primary and Micro vote, who came and gave an explanation of some of the errors that happened. So actually, I want to give a shout out to Micro vote. And the reason I'm doing that is not because they made some mistakes, but I'm doing that because there are, sometimes people don't accept their mistakes and they don't correct it. And that has, I've seen it more often lately than not. And I appreciate any business or individual who accepts their mistakes and corrects them, and which they did before the certification of the vote. And not only that, they came up with a plan as to what they're going to do different to prevent this from happening again. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and I appreciate that. And that's important for their own credibility as a business. And also, it's important for the voters in LaPorte County to make sure that they trust the process. So I think that's very important. Madam President, the other thing I wanted to talk about was about the coronavirus situation. In our county, we have, over the last several days, we have had few reported cases, not usually exceeding five per day. There was one day when there were zero cases. Yesterday, there were two. Today, there were four. The total number of deaths in our county is up to 25. The total number of reported cases is up to 475. Those of you are, you can follow those numbers on our county website, and that's being regularly updated. And I also want to remind everyone who is watching that we have a testing station available at the Michigan City High School. Thanks to the efforts of this county government, along with the county health department and our E M A director, Mr. Butcher, we got that testing station here, and that's being supported by the Indiana State Department of Health and Optum. And one of the things I want to emphasize is that you can go and get this testing done without a doctor's order. Generally, if you want to go to a hospital and get the testing done, you need a doctor's order. If you want to go and get it done here, you don't need a doctor's order. If you have symptoms, or if you have been exposed to somebody with COVID-19, or if you're a high-risk individual, or with medical conditions, or if you're a high-risk individual from some minority communities, you can go and get this done free. And at the county website, the information is there, how you can register online for it, and also to make a phone call and get yourself registered. And lastly, Madam President, for our next meeting, maybe we should consider a resolution that can be sent to the Secretary of State, asking for a no-excuse mail ballot for the general election. And the reason I'm saying this is because this pandemic is not going to be over before November 3. The only, the way this pandemic is going to end is when we have a vaccine in place and when everybody gets vaccinated. I'm very optimistic that the vaccine will come, hopefully by the end of the year or early part of next year. Lot of companies are working hard at it. And then once the vaccines come, usually they prioritize it to individuals like who are in the healthcare and also high-risk individuals, and then everybody else gets vaccinated. So with your permission, may Mr. Friedman can come up with a resolution, and that way we can request the Secretary of State to consider a no-excuse mail-in ballot. One of the nice things about our primary was because of the efforts made, there are a lot of mail-in ballots, 10 times more than usual. And at least not, to my knowledge, there is nobody who reported that they got infected because of going to war. And I think we need to continue to protect our voters, especially senior citizens, especially those individuals with medical conditions, because it has been proven in recent studies that individuals who have high-risk conditions are six times more likely to be hospitalized and 12 times more likely to die from COVID-19. So that's the reason why it's very important that even though our numbers are low, I'm not sharing these numbers not to protect yourself, but I'm sharing these numbers to encourage you to continue doing what you're doing. So that is the social distancing, wearing masks, hand hygiene, and avoiding, avoid congregating in large numbers. So I think I just wanted to reinforce that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was going to do this first, but I didn't. And now when Dr. Cora brought it up, you know, the election was, it was monumental. This is something totally new for the county to have this kind of a result. But, and it was a lot of accusations made. Some of them may have had some truth. Some of them were just outlandish, far out there. But the bottom line, the thing that people didn't see, Diane, Darlene, some of the girls from maintenance and some other folk, even Mr. Friedman came in the one day, bought pizza for everybody working, and stayed and helped, didn't get in the way too bad. But the bottom line is, these people, and I'm not exaggerating when I tell you, they were there long days, 12 to 15-hour days. They were there Saturdays. They were there Sundays. They gave up their Memorial Day weekend.
Yes.
They were working seven days a week to make sure that, to get as much, get this as right as it could be. And we, as commissioners, had their back the whole way. We communicated with each other. We communicated with the, as best we can. Of course, we're on the ballot, so we couldn't do a lot there. But there was a monumental effort by a whole lot of people that really put themselves out there to get this thing done.
You know, thank you, Commissioner. I'm mentioning that, because a lot of volunteers, they put in a lot of effort.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Morzinski, because, you know, we've been hearing through social media and the regular media that there were mistakes that may have happened. But when you consider that we had 10 times more mail-in votes than we have ever had before. But I do think that Dr. Cora is right on target, that this is time for us to analyze as a state how we vote, to make sure that people have accessible voting. It's easy to vote. It's not a difficulty. You know, as you know, I lived in the state of Washington, where for the eight years I lived there, it was mail-in vote 100% of the time. There were no precinct places. There was no fraud that was notable. It was so convenient. The voter turnout is high, which is America's, one of our most valued rights, is the right to vote and pick the people that you want to represent you. So I, at this time, I would like us to encourage the election board. There are two new members who are, I watched the meeting on ALCO, and they seem to really be very passionate about the work that they're going to be tackling. So I encourage them to meet regularly and often as we prepare for the fall election so that we, all the county entities can support their work, and we can make sure that whatever errors or, you know, inefficiencies there were in the spring election, those are, we have plenty of time to solve those. We, in the spring, provided all the support that we could. But now that we've got some running room, I think it's time for us to ask the election board to really analyze and make sure that we've got every, everything perfectly in place and lined up for a robust fall election, which is good for our country. Anyone have anything else? else? And the last thing I want to say is, I think we're so fortunate to have Dr. Cora on this commission, because, you know, we all read the medical things, but you make it really come home, because you are a practicing physician. And, you know, by bringing that expertise and insight, and kind of telling us what's happening on the ground, that's a benefit for not just those of us who are in decision-making positions, but the members of the public. I think you're spot-on saying, you know, "Don't stop now. We're looking at some states where they did stop really early. They're not taking preventive measures, and now their numbers are starting to escalate again, and we don't want that to happen here." So, again, thank you for encouraging people to have faith, to realize that the things that they're doing are working and helping prevent the spread, so that our county can be healthy and we can get that economy rolling again.
Madam President, I have one other comment. Yesterday, in the media, there was a report that individuals who got a medicine called dexamethasone, which is a steroid, they, they got better. There was a 30% reduction in mortality. And I want to tell you that, and everybody who's listening, that physicians who are practicing right here in LaPorte County, they were giving, because we, this was a dire situation. We did not have this information, but we were giving the steroids to the thicker patients who were on ventilators and who were in the ICUs. And so, I'm grateful that we, that we were able to at least save some of them because of this action.
That's wonderful.
But it's good to have the confirmation.
Sure, sure.
That, that this was helpful. So, I, this morning, when we were discussing on rounds in the hospital, we all felt good that at least there's something good came out of it.
That's, that's really great news.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, everyone. At this time, let's adjourn our meeting.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.